All right, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Giffens, please.
Good morning. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will find whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Great, thank you so much. And yes, you are having some internet problems. You froze a couple times. Let's go to department updates, and we'll begin with the all-important Health Department and Ms. Cottle. Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for allowing me to be here again today. My comments today will be pretty brief, but the Indiana Department of Health announced last week that they are partnering with Gravity Diagnostics to provide COVID testing and vaccinations at various sites throughout Indiana. This means a change for us locally with regard to our community testing site. The testing site is now expected to be handled through the Indiana Department of Health and the Gravity Agreement. So we are waiting on those details, but that testing site is still coming. Today, if you are in need of testing or vaccine, there is a mobile site set up at N.DOT Bloomington office, and that is at twenty-nine sixty-five North Prow Road from one to five P.M. today. So again, if you are needing testing today and are looking for a site, you can go to the N.DOT office today from one to five. We have been holding steady over the past few weeks in that yellow advisory. However, today that will change as we will move to orange. This was by a very small margin, but it does highlight the high level of transmission that is occurring in our community. The need remains high for proper isolation and quarantine, for masks when unvaccinated or when indoors in public places regardless of your vaccine status. All of the precautions like distancing, monitoring for symptoms, hand hygiene, all of those things remain, and most of all vaccination. Speaking of vaccinations and our infection rates, our younger age groups, specifically ten-to-twenty-year-olds, continue to make up the highest percentage of COVID cases in Indiana. Breakthrough cases are about zero-point-nine percent of all fully vaccinated individuals. And in Monroe County, that percentage is even smaller. Light breakthrough deaths, hospital admissions for those who are vaccinated have increased only slightly. In the recent weeks, less than five percent of hospital admissions were vaccinated. As of today, or as of yesterday, excuse me, as of yesterday, fifty-nine-point-two percent of our eligible population was fully vaccinated. Now, while that is better than many counties, it is still much lower than what we would like to see. Third-dose vaccinations for those with specific immune-compromising conditions are available. Talk with your provider to confirm your eligibility if you believe that you fit that definition. And booster doses for the general population who've already received their first two doses, that is still being considered, but it is not yet approved, and an answer to that may actually come by this weekend, and that's what I have for you today.
Great. Thank you so much for joining us again today, providing this very timely information. Let's see if there are comments or questions. Commissioner Jones?
I'm just pleased to hear that we may know about booster vaccines by this weekend.
Commissioner Giffens?
I'm just distressed that we've moved to orange status. It didn't need to happen.
Great. Yeah, and that is, that is bad news, even if we're just slightly in it, it's, we're still in it. And that's a good reminder to our community that this is not over yet, and we have a lot of work to do. So, but thank you again for the update, and we look forward to hearing more about the testing and vaccine site as soon as it's available. I know we're going to get it out on our Residence Alert site as well for everybody, so thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, and with that, we'll move on to Emergency Management. Ms. Moore, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having me again this morning. I have just a couple announcements. I want to let you know that our blood drives for September were successful. Every spot was filled. I just can't, I can't believe that every week I come back and I say that, and then every week I doubt that we're going to get, or every month I doubt we're going to get those filled, but Monroe County residents are just absolutely amazing. Even in this pandemic, we continue, there continues to be positiveness, and we appreciate all of those individuals that make that donation for others that are in need through this very, very critical time in our country. We have two blood drives scheduled for October, and they are October twenty-second, they will be, that one will be from two to seven in October, I'm sorry, October twenty-first from two to seven, and then October twenty-second from ten to three. Both of those drives are going to be at a new location that we've not hosted before. They will be at the Southeast YMCA. So that information is on our county website under the Emergency Management page at co.monroe.in.us. And you can also go to the redcross.org website where that information, as well as the address, is listed. You can select a time slot that works for you and your schedule and make an appointment to donate that blood. As I've mentioned in the last couple weeks, it's National Preparedness Month, which is an exciting month for our office. We have talked about building a kit and where you can go on our website to get that information and suggestions for things to put in, a family kit. We last week talked about Monroe County Alert. Commissioner Thomas just mentioned that with the pandemic. We do send out weather events, and so it's good, it's a free service that's offered to our community. You can sign up on the homepage by clicking on the megaphone under Citizens Alert. If it's something that you're not computer-savvy with and you'd like to give that information over the phone, you can contact our office at eight-one-two-three-four-nine-two-five-four-six. We are more than happy to get you signed up. We have had almost ten thousand people sign up additionally this last year through the, for the Monroe County Alert system, which is wonderful, and we are happy that we can provide the service to Monroe County. We also provide weather events, and then we also provide anything in regards to the COVID pandemic as well as like testing sites that become available and vaccine places if, if they are new to our area once they become available as well. So very, very good, helpful information, and again, it's a free service, so we encourage you to do so. This week, in regards to National Preparedness, we're just going to talk a little bit about making a plan, and there are lots of helpful information on our website, information where you could just click here, and it will give you some suggestions for how you can make a family plan. And the, the point that I really wanted to just touch upon is not only should you, as a family, sit down and make a plan, but then you need to practice that plan. You need to make sure that your teens and your small children, if you have elderly people in your house, you know, those are different things that you need to consider when making plans on where you may need to go and, and how you may need to get there, and then how you can communicate with other people if they are, may or may not be in your actual household. So those are things to consider, but I encourage you to not only make that plan, but to practice it. And of course, if you ever are a resident in Monroe County and have questions or concerns about that, we are always available to help with anything that you may have, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Moore, and I'm going to take a moment of, to let everyone know that sadly, you are moving into the private sector, and we're going to miss you a ton, and, but a few things to say before that time comes. First, I want to recognize that Allison Moore received the Local Emergency Manager of the Year Award from the International Association of Emergency Managers, the Clayton R. Christopher Award, and we cannot be more proud of that accomplishment. And we're going to kind of say, well, it's great for Monroe County, but it really says a lot about you. And we appreciate all of your work over the years. You've had a lot to deal with. It's been a crisis-of-the-month club lately, but you have set up that accountability system for all first responders, working on multi-jurisdictional scenes, new software for our tornado sirens. You've helped provide cooling stations at our local fire stations for those who are unhoused or those without air conditioning, tornado, flood, pandemic, the list goes on. And we really especially want to note that you worked with both the state and the Convention Center staff to provide a place for community members to apply for assistance as a result of the two thousand and twenty-one flood. And of course, during this pandemic, you've ensured a steady supply of PPE for the community and masks for individuals at our fire stations. You worked with the Convention Center and now with others, including the Y, to provide Red Cross blood donation sites and helped publicize that and put us at the top of the state and a leader nationally in terms of blood drives. We just cannot thank you for all the sleepless nights. I will always look back fondly on our three A.M. text conversations about whatever event is coming up, and, and I just want to take a moment to thank you on behalf of Monroe County and the Board of Commissioners, and I will turn it next to Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. I want to congratulate you on such a wonderful new opportunity and also such a fantastic award. That is very impressive. Your calm manner is exactly what is needed in an, in an emergency director, and you have just very calmly and efficiently led the county through so many different, really difficult situations. I would like to mention one other thing that isn't really very well-known, and it's possible that even you don't know this. Last year, an environmental resiliency assessment was done of Monroe County, and it assessed each department according to how resilient they would be in the future as things change for us. Well, you scored the very highest of any of our departments. It was very nearly eight out of ten points, which is better than hardly anyone in Indiana, well, than most people in Indiana. So this is some, another thing that we're very, very proud of and are awfully sorry to see you leaving. And thank you so much for your service.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I'm going to tear up here. Shortly after I was sworn in, there was a tornado, and I met Allison and had to lend her a pair of boots because she was out there tromping around, and she was going to ruin her sandals, right? Because that was her job, and she was there to take care of people, which was just always amazing to me. I think that the example of the blood drives, again, above and beyond what's required of anybody, but you're there, and you're, you're there because you care about people. Even after the start of the pandemic, again, people probably don't even know this. When our local hospital was trying to triage people, you were the one that said, okay, we've got this big, huge tent. We'll put it up outside the hospital to make people safer. And this is before we, we knew all the things that we needed to be doing, but you were there and you were on it. So I'm going to miss you, but I know I'm going to stay your friend, yeah, follow what your kids do, what your husband's doing, what you're doing. So I thank you, and I'm going to miss you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's really hard for us. I mean, we're so happy for you, but so sad for us. And indeed, you do put the people of Monroe County first, and you're just so resourceful, and that's exactly what we need. And as my colleague said, calm, thoughtful, everything we could want. So thank you again for your service to our community, and we are going to miss you.
Absolutely. That feeling is definitely likewise, and it has been nothing but an honor to serve Monroe County and the Board of Commissioners. So thank you so much for your friendship, as well as your partnership and all that we've accomplished over the last four and a half years.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And next, we will dry our eyes and turn, if we can, turn to Ms. Ridge and an update on roads and streets and all of those great things.
Good stuff. Good morning. I do want to say we're doing our walkthrough for the Roger Street Bridge tomorrow. It should be open in the afternoon by the end of the day, once we get the barricades and make sure everything was built to satisfaction that we anticipate it opening up. I did send a drawing to I.T. if they could share the drawing for a schematic design of the roundabout at Roger Street and Gordon Pike.
Give me just one moment, please.
Let me put my glasses on so I can see this too. Go down. Down, that's the one that I want. Okay, so it's hard to read the legends on there, but I'm going to put my glasses on so I can read them to you. If you see the number ones on the screen, this is the picture for the Roger Street and Gordon Pike. Number one, that's going to be stacked large quarry blocks. If you see number two, that's going to be cast-in-place concrete, which is a limestone veneer wall that we will install. Number three will be planting areas. Number four is going to be stamped and colored concrete to match the existing that's there at this time. We will be having landscape uplight on number five within the, around the limestone blocks. Number six is going to be concrete sidewalk, crosswalk by others. Number seven is going to be concrete curb, and then also number eight is the concrete apron. The conceptual plan, planting for this, for the roundabout, the larger circles is, is approximately nine shade trees. We're going to have approximately twenty-one shrubs, large shrubs. We're going to have medium shrubs, and then the smaller shrubs kind of give it just a little bit of offset for the, for the whole roundabout. We're going to also be planting ornamental grasses within the area, and this is also going to include some of these areas will be out to the medians that are out there. And then we'll have some perennials and then some ground covers throughout the, the area. So this is kind of, we will be installing, it's in the design to put in an irrigation system. So we will, this is where we're moving to. So we just did the contract to get this out to bid, and so hopefully we can start getting some plantings, meeting with the, the quarries and getting some limestone block and everything hopefully donated through, to the project. This is also going to be the same conceptual design for the roundabout at Bachelor School and Gordon Pike. So that's kind of where we're at with that project. So I find it really exciting. I can't wait to see what it turns out. This is so new for Monroe County, something that we haven't been a part of. I want to thank the, the BANA Group and the participants in the beautification committee of this and the commissioners that participated. It's been a, a great joint effort, Hitchcock Design, working with them for the first time. It's been a pleasure. So yeah, we're excited to move forward with this and see what the outcome will be.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you so much, Ms. Ridge. It's so great to see this. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it, it really has been such a pleasure to work with the neighbors in this area to come up with this concept, with the whole plan. A whole lot of thought went into the detail of it before it even went to the landscape architects, and then, of course, a whole lot more work after that. I think this is probably going to be a showpiece of a, a roundabout. It's going to be pretty spectacular, and I'm very excited to see it.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, this will be one of those gateway things that we're proud that people see as they come in to the area.
Yeah, I agree, and it's not going to be all concrete, so.
Right, or just grass, which is the other thing we've seen. And, you know, this is really an important step for us because these are really our first county roundabouts, roundabouts that we have built, and it's our opportunity to do something different. And boy, that beautification committee, I remember meeting before the pandemic started. At, I think we were at Perry Township Meeting Room. Just an incredible group of people who are really thoughtful about this design process. They thought about the seasons, they thought about color, they thought about height. Just an amazing group, and can't thank them enough. And, and thank you, Ms. Ridge and your department, for kind of steering this process as well and making sure we're staying on, on track. And I hope we, I hope we try to do this with every roundabout that we install ourselves, that we're actually constructing. I would love to see this become our standard in terms of meeting with residents, the people who see it the most often, and getting their input and putting something together and really making these works of art as well as practical traffic devices. So thank you so much. Great. All right, let's see if there are any other department updates. Those who want to offer a department update can raise their hand. Oh, Mr. Cockrell, good morning.
Good morning. I have a couple things, and I don't know how much of them there are, department updates as opposed to scheduling updates. Just wanted to make sure the public was aware that the hearing for the Seven Oaks Classical School was originally scheduled for tomorrow, but that has been moved to Monday at three P.M. Again, this is an adjudication-type hearing, but we do allow the public to view it and, and, and watch the proceedings. The other item I have is between this meeting and the work session, we've received at least two bids for the Alexander Memorial. I'm going to open those and read those aloud at that time, so I just kind of wanted to give everybody those updates.
Great, thank you so much. Excellent. Any other department updates? Just raise your hand. I do not see any. So now we will move on to our proclamation.
Am I supposed to start it?
Yes.
Hispanic Heritage Month is observed from September fifteenth to October fifteenth of each year to recognize the contributions and influence of Hispanic Americans on the history, culture, and achievements of the United States. Whereas September fifteenth was chosen for the starting point for the commemoration because it is the anniversary of independence of five Hispanic county countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, all who declared independence exactly two hundred years ago in eighteen-twenty-one.
Whereas Hispanic Americans have been integral to the prosperity of the United States. Their contributions have been immeasurable, and they embody the best of American values. Soldiers of Hispanic descent have been serving in the U.S. military through our history. In seventeen-seventy-seven, Bernardo de Galvas, the Spanish governor of Louisiana, joined George Washington's fight against the British to help win independence. And during World War Two, up to a half million Hispanic Americans served our country.
And as of two thousand and twenty, it is estimated that the Latino and Hispanic population in the United States has reached over sixty-two million, making up over one-fifth of our population. The theme for the two thousand and twenty-one Hispanic Heritage Month observation is Espada, a celebration of Hispanic heritage and hope. In keeping with this theme, we invite all residents of Monroe County to reflect on the contributions made by members of Latino and Hispanic communities and to remember that we are stronger together. Now, therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, proclaim September fifteenth to October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Monroe County. Right, thank you, thank you again, Ms. Giffens, for putting all of that together. All right, and next we have public comment. Public comment is reserved for items that are not on our agenda, and I will also add that we cannot accept public comment on items related to the upcoming Seven Oaks appeal that's set now for Monday at three P.M. You're welcome to view that at that time, but we cannot accept comment, and we will have to cut off comment if we do receive it. So if you are interested in making comment, you have three minutes, just as you will, for each agenda item. At two minutes and thirty seconds, you will hear a tone. And when you hear that tone, that means you have thirty seconds to wrap up your thoughts and comments. And so if you do have items for public comment, please raise your hand. It looks like we have Mr. Hal Turner from the Election Board.
Yes, thank you. Recently, the Rand Corporation presented a, a study at the request of Department of Homeland Security titled "Options for Ensuring Safe Elections." And they found that of those who intended to vote, only sixty percent expected to be able to do so safely, and of those who were voting, only fifty-four percent expected their votes to be counted accurately. Those are dismal figures and very disturbing. Monroe County was faced with its own challenges during the last election. We had a lot of frustrated, angry voters in line for waiting around the block, even though Election Central was at a maximum utilization of its current space and processing one vote every forty-five seconds. We had violations in the chute, which is the imaginary fifty-foot line around the voting area where people were wearing campaign paraphernalia. We had at least one suspected criminally false registration that's currently under state police investigation, and we had several complaints of a lack of privacy during early, early voting despite social distancing enforcement within the space available to us. None of these results is acceptable in any election. The security of elections cannot be tolerated in any way, shape, or form since it threatens the basic concept of free and fair elections and thus the legitimacy, legitimacy of governments. As we speak, the Office of Clerk of Courts Nicole Brown is addressing these issues through a detailed evaluation of the needs of voters and staff and the proposals presented by the Monroe County Board of Commissioners at the last Board of Elections meeting. I want to thank you very much for that presentation. It was exactly what we needed at the right time. In a few weeks, Nicole Brown will present her results to you for your comments and actions. Until then, the Board of Elections will offer you whatever information you require outside of the clerk's areas of responsibility for budget and facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to offer comment on items not on our agenda and not related to the Seven Oaks Appeal? Seeing none, let's return back to our agenda and item five, please.
Move approval of the minutes for September eighth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second. Great, we have a motion and we have a second comments edits.
I sent in edits earlier, and they've been taken care of already.
Great, thank you so much. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of the minutes for September eighth, two thousand and twenty-one?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims packet accounts payable September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Miller joining us. Tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning. The total for claims was four million, four hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred eleven dollars and thirty cents. Very large portion of this was the distribution of local income tax, which was a total amount of three million, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, one dollars and sixty-five cents. Of that total, seven hundred eighty-eight thousand, two hundred sixty-six dollars and six cents was specifically for the public safety local income tax. $279,537 was for Area 10 Agency on Aging Rural Transit for the quarter two federal transportation operating grant. And finally, $80,718.75 was for Monroe County Treasurer for September Full Time Self Insurance.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, it was when I again saw that total, I got kind of gasped, but then realized a lot of that's just passed through. So, yeah.
And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand in the Zoom screen again. Public comments limited to three minutes per person. I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrow, will you please call the roll on the approval of the claims packet accounts payable September 15th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you. And now we move on to new business.
Move to approve 2021 Sophia Travis Community Service Grants Agreements. Fund name, County General, Fund Number 1,000, in an amount of $135,400.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second and we have Counselor Cheryl Munson joining us this morning. Good morning. Tell us all about it.
Good morning, Commissioners in Monroe County. This is a wonderful opportunity for me personally to inform you about the awarded Sophia Travis Community Service Grants for 2021. We had 38 grant applications requesting nearly $260,000 in funds for various projects. And we were able to award $135,400. We have a great number of wonderful not-for-profits in Monroe County. And they applied for grants in the following areas of support. Climate change, diversity, equity, and inclusion, emergency shortages, excellence in government, first responders, health, food, nutrition, security, and shelter, transportation assistance, veterans assistance, and youth enrichment opportunities. So I will just read read the names of the agencies, their projects, and the amount of the award.
Please do. Thank you.
Alexandra's Food Drive, $2,250 for the 2022 Food Drive. All Options Pregnancy Center, $3,410 for the Hoosier Diaper Program. Amethyst House, $3,050 for residential food. Area 10 Agency on Aging, $4,630 for the Endright East Active Living Community Center. Beacon Incorporated, $7,060 for their COVID-19 homeless prevention project. Area 10, excuse me, Big Brothers Big Sisters, $5,080 for recruitment and mentoring for their one-on-one program. Boys and Girls Clubs of Bloomington, $5,180 to help with the flood damage recovery at the Lincoln Street Club. Catholic Charities of Bloomington, $2,370 for trauma training and expansion services. Centerstone of Indiana, $3,380 for their Welcome Home Program. Community Justice and Mediation Center, $2,440 for outreach materials, supplies, and training scholarships. Community Kitchen of Monroe County, $4,880 for food purchase. Courage to Change Sober Living, $2,580 for their Fresh Start Rent Scholarship Program. Grace Center Incorporated, $2,240 for food purchase for the food pantry. Hoosier Hills Food Bank, $3,990 for their COVID food project for 2021. Hoosiers Feeding the Hungry, $2,620 for meat processing for their quote, "Meet the Need" program that provides processed meat to various food pantries. Hotels for Hope, $2,830 for office space. Indiana Recovery Alliance, $5,420 for Sharp's Disposal. Indiana Solar for All, $3,990. This is right. Solar panels for Monroe County residents. Lotus Education and Arts Foundation, $2,830 for their Lanterns Remix Program. Bloomington Meals on Wheels Incorporated, $3,580 for their groceries to go. Middleway House, $3,620 for rekeying the new wings at the emergency shelter. Midway Music Speaks, $2,420 for the Girls Rock Camp and Workshop Series. Monroe County Humane Association, $4,120 for an outreach transportation vehicle. Monroe County United Ministry, $3,500 for their self-sufficiency program. Mother Hubbard's cupboard, $5,580 for their emergency food pantry. New Hope for Families, $5,280 for their Housing First Program. New Leaf New Life, $2,630 for transition support materials. Planned Parenthood, $3,580 for patient financial assistance for preventative healthcare services. Sojourne House, $4,280 for their residential and outreach program. South Central Community Action Program, $4,080 for the JT Memorial Health Fund. Bloomington St. Vincent de Paul, $3,040 for 200 plastic dressers for children. Suzie's Place, $3,220 for furniture for their office. Team First Book Monroe County, $2,580 for their book program, Increasing Diversity and Inclusion. The Bloomington Project School, $2,420 for their project place. WFHB Community Radio, $2,520 for event broadcasting. Wheeler Mission Ministries, $3,980 for intervention services. Writing for a Change Incorporated, $1,920 for their Young Women Summer Writing Camp. And finally, Youth First Incorporated, $2,820 for their social work program. Thank you for your patience in listening, in listening to these agencies and their projects.
Thank you so much, Counselor Munson. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, it's wonderful that this many very deserving agencies and programs are being supported by the county. I did want to ask, am I correct in thinking that the council is looking at possibly increasing the amount of money in the Sophia Travis Fund?
Yes. Yes, we have increased it in recent years by just the growth quotient amount. And the committee made a strong recommendation to increase it more because year after year after year, we receive grant proposals for so much more than we have available. So we'll see how that turns out with the whole council.
Okay, thank you. I, I hope that that works out. Thanks.
Commissioner Giffens?
First of all, I want to thank Counselor Munson. I know that this is not an easy task to, to make those decisions, not to grant everything that, that's requested. But the very first item that's on your list for Alexandra's Food Drive then was started by an elementary school girl. And I just think it's amazing that we have people that are that engaged in our community and that are caring for other people.
And, and I agree. I think this is one of the toughest tasks that the council has to do because there are so many worthy organizations and so much need in our community. So appreciate you and your committee for all the hard work on getting the information you needed to make such a, such a wise decision. So we appreciate seeing this today. And the council has approved this, yes?
Yes, they have.
Excellent. Great.
And all, all the contracts are ready to be signed.
Excellent.
Before leaving you all, I want to thank the Sophia Travis Grants Committee members. We have two members from the public. This is Ryan Boyce and Josh Johnson. And we have two other council members, Kate Wilts and Trent Deckard. And we worked well together. So I was very happy to serve on this committee and I, I know they were too, despite, despite the hard decision.
Yeah, that's a formidable group. Excellent. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Do not see any. So with that, Mr. Copper, will you please call the roll on the 2021 Sophia Travis Community Service Grants Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much. And it's worth noting as well that this is an aptly named program for the late Sophia Travis, who really served this community so well. And her life was too short. But we, we're so proud to be able to support this and, and something I think she would appreciate. Right. Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Move to approve Indiana Department of Homeland Security Grant. Fund name and fund number to be decided. The amount of the grant is $3,885.
Second. We have a motion and a second. And with dryer eyes, we have Ms. Moore joining us to tell us all about it.
Yeah, I had reached out, or actually Carlos from the airport head, and I had been in communication a little over a couple of months ago. They've done an expansion there at their facility and they were in the, in need for an, an AED, an Automatic External Defibrillator. We also have branched out. We're still at the highway, but in a different building where our Emergency Operations Center is and found it necessary to also have the need for an AED. So we put in a grant for two to three, depending on the price and how they come in at the given time to receive. So hopefully we'll have enough funds to get three and we can secure another location within Monroe County to secure an AED. But at least two AEDs could be purchased with the grant amount. And this is a competitive grant that we applied for that allows for equipment for lifesaving devices. I know that there were other counties that also put in for different equipment and other counties that also put in for AEDs that did not get funded. So it does our office extremely well when we use the right grant savvy words and have the right needs for those pieces of equipment that we're desperate to have. And we are very fortunate that we received this and will definitely be on the lookout to hopefully be able to secure three in our county.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
This is definitely something of benefit to the county, as most of what you do is. It's, it's certainly a very wise idea and I'm glad you could get a grant for it. I was curious, do you have a third location in mind or is that just to be decided?
It will be decided. So that is definitely something we can work with the maintenance department on and see where they're currently all located. And then see where those needs may arise. And of course, in the future, it may be something that we find that when we're searching for a third place, that we have various places that might need those. And if so, then year after year, we can hopefully seek and search for, for additional funding for, for those.
Right. Commissioner Giffens?
This is another way that Allison Moore is taking care of the health of residents of Monroe County. What can we say? You sure you really have to leave? I mean.
I really didn't think we were going to get this one because we'd heard other people were, had been awarded and, and so I was like, tag on it. I really kind of wanted to go out with a big bang. And then yester, or I don't know, one day last week, Kate said, I think we got that grant. And so we searched and I was like, oh, yay. What a, what a great way to, to go out on. So exciting for Monroe County.
You did your happy dance, huh?
We did.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And thanks for pursuing that. This, this, these are the kinds of things that really help Monroe County government out. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Just raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Seeing none, Mr. Copper, will you please call the roll on the Indiana Department of Homeland Security Grant Approval?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Awesome. Thanks. And I will work with Ms. Purdy and the Indiana Department of Homeland Security to get the electronic signature before I depart. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Move to approve purchase agreements for properties on Hunter Valley Road. Fund name, 2019 Geo Bond, Fund Number 4812, in an amount not applicable.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrow, please tell us all about it.
Yes, what we have in front of you are two different purchase agreements. One is for what we've considered to be Hunter Valley Two. These are both kind of in just the northwest of the I-6946 interchange. They are owned by Mrs. Francis. And that is, the purchase price is $175,000. The, the reason it's not detailed out as a specific number in the agenda request is because a couple of different things. One is we've, in this, these agreements, we've, are going to cover the closing costs for this. Plus, we have agreed to cover the 20, pay 22 real estate taxes on those. So, don't really know what all the, those numbers are, but the base price for that one is $175,000. The other one is what we've, I think referred to as Hunter Valley Two, which is owned by the Yates Trust. The purchase price on that is $195,000. And again, we, we've made those same covering the closing costs and paying next year's taxes part of that agreement as well. So those are the kind of the two properties. If you haven't, there, there are some different language for environmental conditions than we've had in the past, and that's based upon our own explorations and study of the, of the, of the property. So we've, we feel that we've got a pretty good handle on what's there. There is requirements that they can't do anything between now and when we close. Closing date on those are both going to be by the end of October.
Excellent. Thank you so much. And let's see if there are comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is something we've been working on for quite a while. I think maybe three years. And I certainly want to thank the, the sellers for having been so patient with us. And while we had innumerable studies done, well, maybe not innumerable, but several studies done. And it really kind of put things off for a while, but I'm very pleased to see that we have finally come to this conclusion.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, I, I, I agree with, with what Commissioner Jones said, and I, I look forward to getting back out onto the properties to see it again. Especially if somebody goes out and cuts back some of those brambles that were there earlier, but it, it's a great addition to the, what the county can do for people.
Yeah, I think we could nickname the property Chigerville. Yeah, I think we could nickname the property Chigerville because I came back with a ton of chigger bites, mosquito bites, et cetera. Yeah, it's beautiful property. And this is really something that should be in the hands of Monroe County Government. And I really look forward to seeing where we go with this next and what we can make out of this. It has been a lot of years, as Commissioner Jones said. I feel like this has been on the front burner and back burner for a very long time. And it's very exciting just to have this progress. So really great work and thank you, Mr. Cockrell, for getting us here because it took a great deal of work to, to get to this point. So thank you for all of that hard work. Let's see if there are any members of the public who wish to comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the purchase agreements for two properties on Hunter Valley Road?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move to approve Advanced Time Management, Inc. Agreement. Fund name Cumulative Capital Development, Fund Number 1138-30041, in the amount of $47,300.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Purdy?
Yes, I was actually hoping that maybe we could change that motion. I'm going to find the information for you guys because the motion should actually be to approve a total for the first year of implementation costs and maintenance fees of $81,272. And then going forward, the monthly host of software fee will be a not to exceed $3,000.
All right, I would, I'd like to amend my motion to, for Advanced Time Management, Inc. In the amount of, for the first year, $81,217 with a yearly amount after that not to exceed $3,000.
I believe it's a monthly amount not to.
Oh, I'm sorry, a monthly amount.
To $81,272. Okay.
I would second that amendment.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other comments on the motion? To amend the motion? Okay, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on amending the motion?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is amended, three to zero.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Purdy, tell us all about it.
Yeah, we'll do happily. Lao Associates, Inc. is currently the provider for the county's financial and payroll software. And they have coordinated with another provider called Advanced Time Management to create an attendance on-demand software that will integrate with our financial software. And just to, for everybody's edification, time and attendance software is an application that's designed to track and optimize timekeeping for employees and management. And it provides management and employees with immediate information pertaining to benefit time they may have earned, their hours worked, number of employees who are actually scheduled to work on a particular day or are out. The idea behind this project, this product, is it's going to help us to minimize bookkeeping errors, ensure all employees are treated as defined by our personnel policy because our policies will be integrated into the software as well as in union contracts that have separate policies. The software is also going to simplify and automate our payroll process for our one person who provides, who does payroll for our entire county and does a fabulous job. But after the initial getting used to change, I think it will also be beneficial and be more efficient for our department heads that are managing timesheets as it currently stands right now. And I think we have quite a few departments. We're looking forward to, to having this brought forward. And I also want to just say the service and support for this product is managed under our current contract with Lao. And I would like to use this time to also state that Mr. Evans has spoken extremely highly of the support that they get from Lao. He says it's the best he's ever seen. And so I think that is worth mentioning when we're looking at software products. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm sure that there will be a bit of a learning curve with this. And whenever these systems change or we bring in a new system, there are always a few hiccups with it. It can take a while to get it really running smoothly. But I feel quite confident that once this is in place and people are using it well, that it's going to really increase the efficiency and effectiveness of Monroe County.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I, I really like the efficiency that this will add to things, especially planning and scheduling.
Yeah, for sure. And not just efficiency, but insured accuracy without having to re-audit, re-audit, re-audit time, time sheets, which we're filling out manually. Thank you so much, Ms. Purdy, for looking into this and investigating this. And I know you brought it to us last week at our work session. So we had our first view of that and we had the opportunity to ask a lot of questions, which was really helpful. Because this is a change, but it's a great change for the better. And thank you also, of course, to Mr. Evans and the Auditor's Office for Employee Services for making this happen too. So everybody's had a hand in this and it's going to be a great success. So we're looking forward to seeing it. Great. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen. I do not see any. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the amended motion to approve the Advanced Time Management, Inc. Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Excellent. Thank you so much. We don't have any appointments today. I do have a few announcements. So first and foremost, the Board of Commissioners has embarked on a virtual office hours system via Zoom so that we can stay safe during the pandemic. And we'll, we'll adapt once, boy, once the pandemic's over, we'll adapt. But for now, via Zoom, you can meet with one of us to tell us about what's going on, your opinions, your ideas, constituent information. There are six meeting dates each month. Just go to the county calendar at co.munro.us and just click in and join the meeting. You'll start in the waiting room and we'll bring people in one at a time. So we appreciate and appreciate the public and appreciate TSD's help in putting this together. And we look forward to meeting with you very soon. We also have a number of boards and commissions that have vacancies. And probably the one that is most urgent is for the redistricting committee, which relates to setting precincts, council, and commissioner districts. So please apply for that. Also, we have an opening on the Economic Development Commission and a number of others. And it's getting toward the end of the year, so it's time to think about 2022 as well. Go to co.munro.us and fill out an application for boards and commissions. We're also seeking on our website input from the public on the American Rescue Plan Dollars Fund and where, where the community need is greatest. We're looking for your opinions on that. And while the governor's emergency order is in place, we have continued to work with the council to provide the Township Assistance Fund. These are dollars that township trustees can utilize to help those families in need to meet basic necessities like utilities and rent and things like that. If you are struggling as a result of COVID with your finances, please contact your township trustee. Every resident of the county lives in a township and you can find a contact list for each township trustee in the minutes of our meetings each week. Also a note, we have information on our website about annexation. The tool where you can determine for those who are targeted for annexation in the county, the tool where you can determine what your potential tax increase would be, property tax increase would be. And it would tell you for this year or for next year what it would be. But also please note that the city council is planning to meet tonight, beginning at 6:30 on Zoom, to cast their vote on the ordinances for each of the eight areas targeted for annexation. If you haven't spoken up before, or even if you have, tonight would be a good day to let the city council know how you feel. And we all know that annexation impacts not just those who are targeted for annexation and their personal property tax, but it also impacts everyone in the county because it changes the tax revenues coming to Monroe County, to the school district, to the, to the Monroe County Fire Protection District and so many others. And it also impacts city residents who will bear the cost of annexation. And we have spoken out in opposition. And I believe we're going to be there tonight as well. I know I will be to say my piece and to hopefully persuade the city council to wait on this and to proceed more gradually. Let's see if my colleagues have comments. Commissioner Jones?
Just please do attend tonight's meeting if you're, if you, well, everyone is going to be affected. So if you know about this plan and, and have feelings one way or another about it, please do attend the meeting and let the council know how you feel.
Yeah. Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, this morning, WRTV Channel 6 out of Indy ran a segment on the annexation here in Monroe County. There were a couple of residents who spoke very eloquently about the impact and what hasn't been done in, in the past when annexation has occurred. I'm going to that, it's on the, it's on this, the clip. But I also want to wish my Jewish friends a peaceful day of reflection tomorrow on the high holy, high holy day of Yom Kippur. I know that that is the day when they are reflecting and fasting and thinking about their lives. So I wish them peace during that time.
Yeah, it's, it's an amazing day of reflection. It's an amazing day. So indeed, Yom Kippur. Anything else from my colleagues? All right. Good. So we are going to come back for our work session. And what time would you all like to come back for our work session? Twenty past, okay? Is that good? Okay, so we will come back for the work session at 11:20 a.m. But for now, this regular meeting of Monroe County Board of Commissioners is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Please get vaccinated. Thanks.